Meeting of the Howard Planning Board. It is, what is today's date? May 9th, 2017. And anybody that is taping a recording is required by law to tell us the town may audio or video record this meeting. And any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform us. So if you really want to tape it, feel free, but it's going to be on television. The first order of business is PB 2017-16. John and Suzanne McDowell, owners. William S. Little and Sandra Holtz. The applicants seek approval of a two-lot division plan for conveyance purposes as set forth in Math General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81-K through GG. The parcel is identified as 9 Wheelock Lane. Map 42 Parcel A 6-5 is shown on plan entitled Division Plan, prepared by, prepared for William S. Little Jr. and Sarah Clementino Holtz by Terry Eldridge, Public Land Surveyor, dated April 18, 2017. Any lucky winner tonight? Come right up.
Hi, guys. I'm with Eldridge Surveying and Engineering. My name is-
You can come up here and sit down and relax. You might be here for two or three hours, so you know you want to be comfortable.
Hi, Dylan.
Good.
My name is Christian San Martin. I'm with Eldridge Surveying and Engineering. I'm project manager there. And I'm here representing Eldridge Surveying and Engineering to answer any questions you guys might have regarding the plan we submitted. We're looking to submit a two-lot sub, a two-lot division plan in accordance with the A&R law. And, you know, ultimately, it seems to meet all the criteria. Any questions you guys might have? I'm here to field them.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I just had two questions. Just one for, really for clarification. The two lots you're talking about are lots 5A and 5B on the plan that was referenced and that we have in front of us?
Correct. That is the subject parcel.
Okay. Then the two questions I have are, one, could you just briefly explain why this is being done?
We have an abutter that is looking to get some building coverage. And ultimately, he is going to be adding this area to his lot so he could gain that extra building coverage, which is 1,283 feet, square feet, as shown on our plan.
Okay. So what it is, is to add square footage to the abutting lot in order for them to be able to build on it?
Yeah. He's just looking at a garage.
Okay.
To cut out of the bag. So he's, ultimately, needs that extra little bit of square footage to meet the requirements.
Okay. So, and again, according to the note on the plan, the lot 5B will be conveyed to the abutter. Just a question of curiosity. What happens if, to lot 5B if that conveyance, for some reason, never goes through?
You could get re-added to lot 5A, just to kind of throw an idea out there. I mean-
Okay. But we've already approved the subdividing, so would you then come back to re-, or sort of-
Yes. We'll go through the full motions.
Okay.
Exactly. We have to, in order to fulfill what we need to do on our adjoining, or abutting property, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's the only questions I had.
Joe?
So, we're talking about William S. Little?
Yes, sir.
And Sandra something?
Clementino.
So that, now, is, is that King's Road a finished road?
It is. But it is, as you can see, a dead-end road. It has pavement all the way up to the end. And what he's looking to do, like I said, is gain some, some square footage so he could build the garage. One-car garage, that is. He currently doesn't have one and has to park out on the street.
Thank you. Peter?
I may be the dumbest of the group here, but-
No worries.
Which is, I see these King's Road, Boxbury Road, Princess. I, I'm a bit confused as to which parcels we're really looking at.
We are really just looking at lot 5A.
5A.
And parcel 5B is the piece that is going to be divided out of 5A.
Okay. And is there any reason why all the other streets are shown here? Is it just because it happens to be on your-
When we did the, the survey of the subdivision, we ultimately went through both neighborhoods, both subdivisions, to tie in both of them. And so, we felt it necessary to show the complete geometry, which, if you could see, there's a red line on the plan that shows how we tie the subdivisions together.
Okay. But otherwise, they have no relevance?
Otherwise, they have no relevance. Just makes a, hopefully, for a prettier point.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something in the grand scheme of things.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Joe?
And your representation is that if we approve, then you're, you're going to convey parcel 5B to Little and-
Correct. That's our next step after this.
But you don't have to come back to us for that.
Sorry.
Just convey it.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Ready for the audience?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's no public hearing. I'm sorry.
Whatever it is. Okay. I make a motion to endorse the A&R plan entitled Division Plan, prepared for William S. Little Jr. and Sandra Clementine, Clementino Holtz by Terry W. Eldridge, PLS, dated April 28, 2017.
Are we supposed to do the findings first?
Yeah. Well, I'm going to second Joe's motion, but on commenting on Joe's motion, I would like to ask the chairman if we need to have a motion on the findings before we vote on the motion on the approval.
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
We'll do that. Make a motion that we enter into the following findings. One, such modification, adding to, taking away from, or changing the size and shape of lots in such a manner does not to leave any lot so affected without the required furniture. Two, said plan does not constitute a subdivision as the way shown on a plan, therefore approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law, namely Wheelock Lane, and said way provides safety and adequate access.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next.
I already moved it.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to sign the maps now or wait till the end?
We, we have to vote, we have to-
We still have another vote.
Okay.
Joe, we voted on the, we voted on the findings.
I'll do it again. Move to endorse the A&R plan entitled Division Plan, prepared for William S. Little Jr. and Sandra Clementino Holtz by Terry W. Eldridge, PLS, dated April 18, 2017.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Send it around now. No sense in writing. Till we're done. While we're doing that, oh, we'll sign it. That's fine. Today's the 9th. May 9, 2017.
I have to start coming with a pen, don't I? I always am a pencil person. I don't know what we're doing first. Just come over here. I haven't winged this around just yet.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good to go?
Yep.
Item number two is an informal discussion on 557, 563 Route 28, 525 Camelot. Owner, formerly Dino's. Mr. Stinson. Ooh, that's quite a book. I hope you're not going to read it all.
I hope I don't have to. I'm trying to look like I'm studying. It's all part of the, yeah. We're appearing before you tonight because we have some minor changes in the plans which you approved for us back on October 25, 2016. It seems that between the design drawings we presented and the moving to construction drawings, we realized we had made some mistakes and there were better ways we could plan the building out, make it look better, make it more usable, make it more attractive from a, from a view and a marketing perspective. The main change is that we are asking for a height increase of two feet. And the engineer, Sean Riley, will explain to you that even with the increase in height, the overall building height is the same if you consider the decorative fence that shielded the air-conditioning equipment. The equipment is recessed into the roof so that the actual peak is two feet higher. This allows us more first-floor space, which we consider important from a marketing perspective. We've made the units larger. We've gone from six commercial units to four commercial units, all on the first floor, and the second floor rather than, than the, we've moved one of the residential from the first floor to the second, and we only have four. So it's four and four. Before, we had 11 units. Now, we have four and four, eight. And the, when we did this, the impact on the permitting-
Richard. Put them, Richard, put them over there and everybody can see it. Go ahead. All right.
It was clear that we needed a modification of the permits granted by this board. Unfortunately, the planning department does not have an application tailored for modification. So we had to use the standard application, and we went for a modification of everything, even though I'm not sure we need it. We definitely need it on height because we're going up two feet, and this board has the power under the VCOD, Village Commercial Overlay District, to grant waivers. In fact, at our hearing back in October, you asked us, are you looking for a waiver for height? And we said no. So now we are. So we definitely need a waiver in that respect. The mixed-use 325, Section 51M, the commercial and, and the retail space, we have to have at least 33% of the floor area devoted to commercial. We're going to end up having 41 here. So the suggestion is that there's no need for a, a modification of that special permit. There are some site plan changes which the engineer has made. He's going to change some spots to concrete sidewalks and some granite curbing in certain areas. I submit it can be handled administratively. If you don't agree, then we have the application for the special permit for that as well. There is also the special permit, 325, Section 55, for buildings containing more than 7,500 square feet. There's no changes at all. That's not implicated by what we propose to do. The, we, by raising the ceiling heights, we are also able to utilize what was loft space in the second floor for a additional bedroom, where we'd have three-bedroom units. And we have the adequate flow for the septic system. We've talked to the Board of Health, and they are going to require that we come in, but they don't have a problem with the proposal. And again, Sean can address that. That is it. We're going to be here on the 23rd. I don't know how much you want to have us get into the particulars of this, but I, I think the building is a better-looking building. We have, we know, I think it's much safer at the corners. You can see they would sort of cut the corners off so the entrance and exit is a much, much better sightline. We're going to have recessed entrance there and reset, recessed entrance over there. We have the eyebrow windows on the second floor. And the unit's going to be bigger. I think they're going to command a higher class of tenant, hopefully, with the more space. We're trying to get away from the little shop-type things to more substantial tenant-type, occupiable, commercial, retail space. I think the overall impact from a parking perspective, which you granted us a waiver on before, is that we have a requirement for one less spot. Is that-
Right.
So if you want me to address anything in particular about the plan, or if you want to indicate what you think, if you agree with our perspective in terms of what you want to have presented on the 23rd and what permits we may require, we'd be happy to accommodate you. It's already been advertised. We've sent the notices out. But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer. Mr. Riley Willis-Wall.
Okay. Before we do that, Ellie?
So I just put together a quick memo, which is outlining what was approved in 2016, and then also what they're requesting. And so, my only recommendation is I agree that they need to do a modification for the use special permit, the Village Commercial Overlay District, because they are requesting the waiver from the planning board from 30 to 32. I think it might be cleaner if they also get a modification for the mixed-use special permit. It is allowed to go from 33 to 41. I just think in order to follow the chain, it could be just easier for someone in the future to do that. But the rest, I agree. So for the site plan-
Excuse me.
The minor changes for the curbing and concrete, we already received the referral back from the fire department, and they stated that there are no concerns. They're, they were excited about the revised site plan. So that was good. You're not changing the ingress or egress, correct?
That's, that's correct.
I just wanted to clarify.
There is one major thing I forgot to mention. We have also added an elevator. And by adding the elevator, all the units on the second floor are accessible. We didn't, we had a handicap unit on the first floor, if you recall. So the elevator was a major change. It took up in spirit interior space and required re-configuration of the access and egress and the, and the building itself.
Okay.
The, the only modification to the curb cut, we actually changed one of the radiuses from a 10-foot to a 15-foot.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a wider access after meeting with DOT.
Okay. Great. That was my question to make sure that you met with them.
Okay. We'll start it out with Peter. He had to stand up first.
It's a, so as I look at the, the picture, so at the edges, it is now open, and that used to be a solid facade all the way to the end?
That's correct.
It's now open?
Now it's open.
And the, the roof line used to be a straight line. Now it has these eyebrows, or whatever you call it.
That's correct. And you could also see from the original design, there was a, a fence rail up on top that was visible. Now it's, if you look through the architecturals from the side view, it's actually tucked within the, the ridge of the building. So it's a lot more hidden from the, from the main street view. You don't see any of that. It goes back and, in the middle of the building, you'll see the-
The apex.
From last time.
So the, so the, the increased height takes place in the center of the building, sort of?
Yes.
Not, not towards the front, to the sides?
So this is the front view. Front and back are the same. And then on the side, you see the roof comes up, and this is the small area where we do have that.
Excuse me.
Before, this was the, the railing went from front to back, and now it's just in the middle piece. So you can't see that from the street. Looking at it from the street, it's tucked in this area here from the side. So it's only visible from the side when you go down the side of the road.
Thank you.
Okay. And as I look at the top picture, the, sort of those triangular shapes at the very top left and right, what are those?
The shed dormers.
Oh, and one is a side view, one is a-
Yep.
I'm sorry.
This is the side view, so you see these little shed dormers.
All right. And the footprint otherwise is what it was.
Footprints, yes, the same.
Right. And I like the open part personally, you know?
Just to clarify, I'm handing these out, but I didn't send them out in your packet because we need them for next, for the hearing, for the next meeting. So I just need them back.
So one more initial question, because I looked at it, so there's now also a balcony on the second floor that is to be solid.
There's a balcony for each residential unit.
I'm fine.
So that, I mean, there were no amenities for these units. Now we have at least a balcony for amenity and-
Yeah. I mean, so it makes it less of a-
Less a block.
Exactly.
Less mass.
Yeah. All right. Those are all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay? Joe?
I just, do I understand you reduced the number of units, which I assume therefore means that you must have made the remaining units larger?
Yes. Yes. It's four down, four up.
Can you explain that?
There was, there was one unit down-
I remember.
On the lower level. That's been eliminated. The units, there were four units upstairs. There remains four units, but now there's a loft area that we can, that we fit into that, the shed dormers that are on that, that level. So if you look at the-
Loft area in the unit?
In the unit. Correct.
Okay.
But we had four commercial shops across the front and two in the rear for six, all small. Now we have one in each southwest, southeast, northwest, northeast.
I see them.
Which is going to make it a lot easier to create the condominium with the-
And my understanding is this is an information meeting. You're going to file and notify the abutters.
We've already filed. We've already filed, and we've given the notices as well.
For a meeting on the 23rd?
Yes.
I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Larry, I think I agree with, with Ally with regard to the fact that I think we definitely need to vote on the waiver on the height. I think it is much clearer if we also vote on the change of the percentage, even though I agree with Ally, yeah, that it's allowable. And personally, I have no problem with it. But I would like to understand the minor change to the site plan a little bit more and how minor that is.
Sure.
Because if you remember, we did vote based on a site plan that was presented to us.
That's correct.
And my basic feeling is that if there are any changes to that, we do need to vote on that also. But if it is so minor that is really, you know, almost non-existent-
If it's even in question, I approve that you vote on it.
Okay. Well, then, my feeling is I just think, as Ally said, it's cleaner if we vote on it because, you know, when we voted back in October, we were presented with the plan. And so therefore, I think it's just cleaner for everybody and, and better for you and your client if we vote on it and, you know, you have the complete approval, including all the changes.
I agree. I can go over those changes. I mean, essentially-
I mean, if we, if we're going to vote on it-
They're so minor that-
You can wait and you can go over it in the public hearing that we have on the 23rd. That would be fine.
In fact, there was some confusion when we filed as to exactly what we needed. So oddly enough, here we are at this stage, and we haven't paid a filing fee yet because we don't know what the filing fee is, based upon the number of special permits.
Ally will calculate that.
I know.
Probably before you leave tonight.
Whatever it is, we will pay it.
We'll be able to calculate that out, believe me.
Yeah. Don't, don't worry. We'll calculate that one.
Linda.
In terms of, so the lofts are going to actually be bedrooms?
Yes.
So these are three-bedroom units?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to hope that we have a, a actual letter from the health department that the added bedrooms are okay?
We sent a referral out, and we just have to wait for the response, but I'll confirm that it's, that it's acceptable.
We're, we're required because it's, sorry, it's over 2,000 gallons a day. We're required to get board approval as well.
Yep.
So they'll, they'll have a full view of it and a full vote.
Well, that's, and I will, I will hope to see that before I vote. My next last question is, anything that is done here, I know that part of this arrangement to put this building up was the abutters and every, da-da-da-da-da, and all that stuff. Does any of this impact any of those agreements?
The only way it's impacted is the reserved parking spaces for the main building are going to be less, and they're going to be put in different spots because the handicap parking spaces have now moved around a bit. That's all capable of just being modified in the development agreement. Mr. Wastack is here, and in fact-
Okay.
He wasn't here. And I have talked to him about that. But it didn't impact anything having to do with, with the easements, the cross-easements that exist. It'll all be developed as one parcel.
Okay. But, but in any changes, though, that are you're making in terms of handicap accesses here, there, anywhere else, that I'm going to look to make sure that the abutters will state at the hearing that they're okay with these changes and that they've been memorialized, et cetera. Because that was a big deal in October.
Right. Well, the notices went out, so everybody will have their notice.
I'm just telling you what I'm going to look for.
Okay.
Excuse me, just to set a follow-up on Linda's question. In that, having that agreement with the abutters was one of the conditions for our approvals. If these changes require any changes to that agreement with the abutters, I think we need to sort of have documentation that those changes have been signed off by the abutters before we vote on it.
That's fine. That's fine.
Joe?
Just two, two questions, really. First of all, I would appreciate it if you would stay while we consider the next item on our agenda, because it affects you folks and so forth and so on.
I saw that on the agenda, and I have educated myself as to what it is. We're trying to, we're just curious as to how it's going to be proposed, but in essence, we don't have a problem with that. Mr. Wastack has concerns about the parking. We have concerns about the parking. Traffic flow for the summer while the, while the water's open and, you know, businesses are going to be using it, without lining or some kind of direction, it can be, it could get a little bit confusing. But, yeah, we will stay for the-
And my other question was, do I understand, and I just looked at the new plan, all said and done, when this building is up, all of the parking in the rear on, on your client's property-
Yeah.
Not, not the property of Mr. Wastack, and not the property of the liquor store, but on your man's property. Do I understand that's your intention to number all those parking spaces?
Well, they're numbered for the purposes of the plan, so we know how many there are.
But we don't intend to.
But we don't intend to put a number on each one. We're going to put, there's going to be several that are reserved. I think 10, in fact, are reserved for Mr. Wastack up until 5 o'clock. There are seven reserved for Cranberry Liquors. And there are, there was 10 reserved for us with respect to condos, but it might be less now, maybe eight. Those will be marked by signs. In fact, our development agreement, it might, might have been the decision, required that we place signs. In fact, it's the development agreement, now that I think about it, what we would have reserved for. Now, how are we going to monitor that as best we can? But the main thing we're going to try to monitor that has always been a persistent issue there has been beach parking. It has the easement through to Braddock Lane, which provides access to the beach. So trying to be a good neighbor all the while, we're going to, you know, have to monitor that and-
Now, I, I looked at your plan, and I understand your parking spaces and Wastack's parking spaces and the liquor store's parking spaces. Now, currently, if one is, has a devious Irish mind, you go down to the rear of the liquor store and you pull back around and you're right behind the hot stove. Is that access still going to be available?
No.
You can't get in there. You won't be able, I thought that's the way I read the plan.
It'll be a fence. There's no access. There's no easement or any rights there, much as it may impact some people. In order to control the property, that has to be blocked off because that would interfere with deliveries from trucks and-
I understand. I understand. I sort of thought so, but I just, I wanted to hear you say it.
Okay, well, that's...
Okay, Linda?
Quick question, follow-up on that. The hot stove, do trucks pull into the back and to make deliveries to the hot stove through the back? Am I understanding that they're not gonna be able to do that anymore?
They're not gonna be able to, I mean, I don't know if they do it now, but they're not gonna be able to do it in the future.
So, we will be looking at some honkin' big truck, half on the sidewalk, blocking traffic in the middle of the summer?
They have access to the west of the building, off of, uh, off of Main Street.
West is closest to the liquor store.
Okay.
They, they have access onto their own property, off of Main Street.
So they'd be able to pull a truck in and take a delivery?
I'm not sure of the size of the truck that would fit into their property.
Uh, I didn't understand that.
Into the hot stove property?
Yeah, no. And I'm, I'm thinking specifically having some big delivery truck sitting there on the sidewalk or blocking half of Route twenty-eight, a two-lane road, one coming, one going, and...
Well, they may be required to pull into the town parking lot across the street and push their delivery across the street, which they've done in the past.
Oy.
It's taking some time, I'm trying to get there.
That will give you something to figure out for the, for the meeting next time.
Just by way of comment, Mr. Chairman, I think, and I've been on this board a year or two, uh, this project is one that I have had more contact from citizens than, than any other one that I've ever, that I've sat on, that I can remember.
You should spend less time at the, uh, hot stove.
That could be too.
Are there any other questions? Well, Mr. Chairman, are you trying to show us where it is?
Yeah, you can see it a little bit on there.
So, could you, with your pointer, could you show us? It's a little twisted question.
Here's where the building is going. There'll be the access, here's the liquor store here, the hot stove is over here. Sean had mentioned that they have access there for a truck to access here. There's, there's, right now, there's a prize pool here that's gonna be gone. That does create issues as it is. Their, most deliveries will come in the morning. There're gonna be three spots here they can pull alongside this building, or they'll go across the street to the Chamber Building, which actually is closer for them to offload there. We talked a lot about doing this when we came to our development agreement, that working on trucks and access for trucks to turn around, they have no rights to it. You know, and it, it's, believe it, you'll hear in the next presentation, parking is an issue.
Absolutely.
May I, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Waystack said that it crosses the Chamber Building, but actually, the Chamber Building is even a little bit farther to the left than what... The Chamber Parking Lot. Is that the Chamber? I thought it was for the jewelry...
This is basically the resort directly across the street, Schoolhouse Lane.
Right.
Which is almost a cross from where they would come in. That, that's not big enough for a truck to get through. That's next to the building where Hot Stove is. They're gonna end up going over here.
Oh, and that's, yeah, I thought you mentioned the...
Next to Resort. This is, Chamber Building is here, this is Schoolhouse Lane.
Right, yeah, yeah. Just wanna make sure I understood it. Having said that, it, it might well be that, that neither of them deliver every day with, except for rare times. They could probably, if they worked it out, coordinate when the deliveries come. I mean, I don't see them coming every day. Yeah, and I, I, I think, as I think about it, I, I can see the predicament, but I believe you can't keep this application hostage for that issue.
There was a posity of space in Harwich Port for delivery trucks, you know, commencing right at C Street, extending on down to, uh, Bank Street almost, not beyond, so...
I'm sorry, you said?
A posity of pa, of available space to pack delivery trucks when they're coming off, offload, particularly beer trucks. We figured, I, I think, what size truck did we plan on, a forty-five?
Forty, a forty-foot.
Forty-foot semi, which is what the beer delivery, the Cranberry Liquors fellow told us were his, generally his, his truck size.
That was the largest truck, yeah.
Okay, well, that'll be fun to explain that next week. Any other questions?
I just wanna make sure. So, there's gonna be a modification of the Village Commercial Overly District, a modification of the, um, used special permit, and then a modification of the site plan review.
Mm-hmm, so we'll get to look at them all the way, and, and as Jim said, the way that they'll be built. So there'll be no question about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks. The next, sit right down and relax, too. It might be another question. Um, the next item on the agenda, um, is another informal discussion, um, with the Salt Block Food Truck at five fifty-seven, five sixty-three, Route twenty-eight. Formerly Dino's for a used special permit fast food. We've seen you before. Are you, are you...
Oh, we're back.
Are you going to be down at, um...
No, so...
Johnson's Market this year?
Well, um...
Thank you.
After, and this is why informal discussion, we're here for some guidance and suggestions and what have you, and see if there's even something that's possible. So after Doug's, I had several discussions with, uh, Mr. Blaze, who helps with Mr. Manning's property, and, um, they started talking about the food truck and, and he said, uh, it may be, um, uh, oh, well, why don't you, you know, the lot's empty. Why don't you put the food truck where Dino's used to be? And so he said, oh, well, that's kind of an interesting idea. Maybe we'll explore that option. Um, we are, this, we, after this season, we wouldn't be able to be at seven-ten Route twenty-eight anyways, because the Lower Cape Outreach Center is going to be full service, so that will no longer be an option for us.
Okay.
This is something that, uh, we were looking at temporary, as in just this summer. Obviously, the construction's going to begin. I imagine they'll get all their approvals, um, and start construction in the fall. Uh, it's really a four-month business. We go from the middle of May to middle of September. We found it's really not much after that, um, in Harwich Port, sadly, um, for the truck. Dino's was there before. There was an existing restaurant. Um, it is primarily takeout. Um, I would say over at seven-ten Route twenty-eight, probably at any given time, there were mostly, um, we had four tables. You know, sometimes in the height of things, they would be full. There really was never anybody waiting to sit down, 'cause a lot of people would take out, take it to the beach and what have you. So I, just from discussion that everybody just was having in the background about parking, um, I would say probably at the most, maybe like nine cars at a time, 'cause I can imagine where they were, um, in the seven-ten Route twenty-eight parking lot. Our intention would be, if we were able to do this, that we would put the truck towards the back of the lot. Uh, we did have a conversation with Ally and she did say that the, um, lot itself, the line for the commercial district and the residential district does run through the property. I've marked it with a dash. It's an approximation based on the, um, uh, existing condition plan. But we would probably put the truck kind of towards the back of where Dino's and, um, Attorney Hall's office was. It was, at the second glance, Thrush Shop last, um, with four of the tables there. Um, I, I know that they were planning on having with the, you know, there's a, there's a lot of space there. I know that they're planning on having sixty-some odd spots when they put in four commercial businesses. The truck really runs from eleven in the morning to three in the afternoon. It doesn't run before that, really, or after that. We could put some limits on it if you felt we needed to. Um, so I don't know, so we're here for some advice, some guidance, your thoughts on the situation.
Okay, thank you. Who would like, who has the first question? Joe?
Do I understand that you're gonna put this on what is now like the, the, it's gravel or...
It would be back in, yep, in the gravel.
And, and, and that you would put it there, for lack of a better word, permanently, for, when I say permanently, for the three months?
No, goes back to the restaurant.
It goes back to the restaurant every day.
Every day?
Yep, yep.
You, you drive it out and replenish it or whatever you do?
Yeah.
I see. So, so it's not gonna be there overnight?
No. Probably gets there around ten-thirty, so they set up. Uh, they stop serving at three. It just takes about half an hour to clean up, break everything down, and if, uh, the Kennedys were really happy, you know, the site was already, always left cleaner than it was. That was one of the responsibilities of everybody that worked there, was they cleaned up. We had trash cans and recycling bins.
It's almost like car camping, you know?
Leave it cleaner than you, uh...
No, I, I, I ate, I ate there a couple of times.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it wouldn't, no, it would not stay there all day long. It would, it would come in, put its thing, and then leave.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just have two questions. One is, um, you said that you would be working only till like about three o'clock in the afternoon. On nights of the musical strolls during the summer, would you be there for the music?
Yep, yep, music in the port.
Okay, 'cause that tends to bring in a lot of people to Harwich Port.
Yeah, it's been great.
The second question I have is, do you have any type of agreement with the landowner as of yet?
Not as of yet. We would have to, for the permit process, we would have to have one. We did have one with the Kennedys and, um, we'd have...
Nothing written, verbal, yes.
Nothing, no.
Have you had discussions with them? Okay, because I think it would be very helpful, when you came back for approval, if you had that agreement already signed with the landowner.
We have to have a formal agreement signed, and we also have to have, um, use of bathroom facility within two hundred feet. There's, there's a whole number of things that we have to have. So we would duplicate what we did for seven-ten Route twenty-eight, um, with the Kennedys, and we'd have a formal lease and everything, so...
Okay, fine, thank you.
I know that parking is an issue here, that it really isn't public parking, and how is that going to be dealt with? Because with, uh, you know, at some point, people are not go, are not supposed to be parking, well, they're not supposed to be parking there now. But how do you see that if you're gonna be in the back, there's gonna be parking still allowed there? 'Cause I haven't heard anybody say from the owner of this property that they're going to put up any signs that say, "No public parking." Haven't heard any of that. Um, so if there's cars coming and going and you're going to have, uh, a res, you know, the, the food truck, and then you're going to have some tables, I think there's some safety issues here.
Okay.
That I, I'd be a little concerned about.
I mean, if, if we could, and, and this is why, again, we're informal discussion, um...
And actually, the, the signs going up are more a question for the, the property owners than they are for you.
Right. Um, well, I know Dino's as a park, as a restaurant, had parking spaces. So if we were there with a special permit, then our guests would be allowed to park there, I would assume. That's a great question. I don't know. Um, you know, we could put up a, if somebody wanted, you know, some, uh, large tall cones, you know, that had a cordoned-off area for safety issues or something like that. So, you know, this is just, Doug has just started preliminary discussions and talked to them. We would need to go formally and say, "This is what we'd really like to do," but I think we wanted to come to you guys and see if it was even a possibility, before we went too much further with them and said, to sign a lease and do all that. So, I mean, we would, obviously have to do something for a safety issue. Um, I know we were over there today just looking at it and, um, that was one of the reasons we thought of off the back and kind of over to the side, so we weren't in the middle of everything. That was one of the things that we were looking at.
I think to follow up on Linda's question, the, your suggestion of coordinating off a certain area where your operation is going to be, including areas where people are going to stand and wait, and if you're going to have tables, like you had at the other location, you know, have those tables all within that cordoned area, so that, that would be an area where cars just couldn't get into. And how you do it on a temporary basis, I mean, I think that we may have some aesthetical, aesthetic concerns, you know, about whether you use just cones or whether you use something that's a little bit more attractive, like...
I'm sure we could find something more attractive than that. I was just thinking off the top of my head, something that was...
I mean, yeah, flowering planter is, you know, it might be, you know, acceptable, something like that. But anyway, that's a detail, but the coordinating off concept, I think, is going to be important for public safety.
Sure, okay.
I'm perfectly happy with cones. I don't need potted plants.
Well, we wanna make it look pretty as well.
I like the flowers, Mr. Chairman. May I have one more question?
Flower owner is legal now, is he?
Uh, one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, how far are you gonna be away from, is this from homes, houses, other residential? I know there was a big building there before, but I have no idea...
Right, I know that the, um, for example, the, um, the RH1CD line, if you look at the, um, in the back of the diagram, like behind, that, from that, that fence down to there, there's the square marker there.
Yeah.
That's twenty-seven feet.
Okay.
And we would be, you know, it looks like, it was probably about another ten feet beyond that, so it appears to be, I think it was like about thirty-five feet. That's from the fence, and I know the homes are not right up against the fence. There is one home, it looks like, in the back there.
Do you think the, some of the owners might have an objection? I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know, the folks that live on, on that part of Braddock Lane.
And this, this is a truck, trying to visualize it with an open side.
It's a twenty-seven by nine-foot truck. The open side would face this way.
Big blue, it's pretty though.
It's pretty.
Big navy blue with some chartreuse-looking colors on it.
Richard, you have a, a query?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Richard Waystack, I'm the abutter here. This is the first I've heard of the food truck.
Richard?
To be reminded of. I don't feel like, I will speak loudly and project. First of all, we have a development agreement that requires a parking plan by Memorial Day, so we have to have a full plan. I spoke to the engineer from Virginia, as well as the proponent's son-in-law, in addition to Mr. Blaze. When we talked about making some changes here, that might be very beneficial for your business. I don't think the back is the appropriate, I'm sorry.
I don't think the back is the appropriate place to put it. We had talked month and a half ago about creating, the parking is still an issue right now, to try to start the parking plan that's gonna occur next year, this summer. And one of the ways to do that is to take the first six or eight spaces right here, up front, on the street, where they either get rid of some of the pavement, put it in with, with mulch or wood chips. That would serve two purposes. We talked about having some picnic tables there, having a public space, and it would be more beneficial for both your business in the parking plan and the ultimate building a year from now, is to have your truck closer to here. It would allow people to start using the new parking schematic of coming back behind the building, one way in, one way out. It would also allow, we had discussions with the Chamber of Commerce, of utilizing this lot all summer for musical performances as well. So for you as a business, it would have the advantage of being closer to the street, number one. Number two, it would allow for musical performances in there. And I, I haven't spoken to the engineer or the attorney for the proponent, but if we could have a discussion together, because from my perspective, by Memorial Day, we have to have a parking plan in place. That's part of the development agreement for the entire project. And I have rights in this through an easement that allows me access to the entire parking lot, so we really need to work that out together. Putting it back here is the worst place you could put it. Right now, this building is gone. If you haven't driven down there, I would encourage the planning board to do so. It's all hard pack. And on Saturdays, Friday afternoons, noon time, the parking is all over the place. There is no flow at all. The engineer and I have been speaking of trying to do something with some markings, putting some lines in so people know where the parking will be this summer. It'll be the same parking that will occur when the building is done. It will be beneficial for your business. It will be beneficial for my clients, the liquor store's clients, and the town in general. If we have a public space up front, you could work your truck in here, strictly in the commercial zone, away from any of the houses. It could be a win-win for everybody. So, I would kindly request that we have a chat together with the attorney for the proponent, with the engineer, and also the liquor store owner, who should be a part of this discussion as well. That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Waystack, um, I, I take it you'd also like to start to train the general public as to how you want the traffic pattern to go?
It's true, and it's, right now, the concern is if, if, a couple of times it's happened already in the last month, the parking is so haphazard, you can flow right here, but with the overflow going to the stove and to maybe other businesses, people are parking all the way straight down. There's no way to get around. Forget a truck. If public, if public safety had to come in, there's no way, you'd have to back right out. You could not get around. We need to train the public. It's essential that we start doing that, because a year from now, this building will be in place. The new parking scheme will be in place. Again, this is, I'd love to see it work. I think it would be beneficial to all parties, to your business, to the eventual proponent's plan. If we start training people, we do it for public safety, 'cause right now, there's no safety in that parking lot. And I have grave concerns that someone's gonna get hit, and as the, the engineer for the proponent had spoken earlier, not this particular engineer, was that this public space will be very beneficial this summer to the entire community.
Sure, Joe?
I, I just, I, I think it's important, I, I don't have any handy-dandy way to how you do it, Richard, but I think it's important. Most people in this community think that that's a town public parking lot. They don't realize it's private property. And, and it seems to me, whether... And it seems to me, whether sooner or later, you're going to have to get that message across, whether you put a big sign up or whatever you do.
The first two tow trucks will send the message.
Well, whatever it is, I'm just pointing out that, that, that most people think that's a public lot. And you and I, of course, know it's not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to Mr. McParland, I agree. And I think one of the issues with the parking plan that's to be in place by Memorial Day is we do some signage. One of the recommendations we had made to the proponents' engineers is while they're doing this public space up here with the food truck, which we didn't know until tonight, but is to start doing some marketing for their building, to put up what you saw earlier, for the public to see that this is coming, starting in October. And at the same time with that park, with that signage, if we did have some signage there that states it is private parking. It is parking for, we had some on the side of my building, that it is private parking. But we need to expand that. I don't care what happens after 5 o'clock. You know, people want to go to the stove or to the liquor store, that's great. But I've got four tenants in this building. And each of them have public businesses that have to have parking. We've worked out a plan, but I think you're right. If we do some of that in, again, the parking plan that will be done this month, that will be one of my suggestions, Mr. McParland. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Jim?
Yeah, Larry, just sort of on a follow-up from Mr. Waystek's comments. What I was wondering is, you know, it seems like he has a deadline with regard to a parking plan. What might be a good idea, if you can, you know, work with it, is to have the discussions that he suggested, you know, within the next two weeks, and then come back to us at our next meeting weeks from now. And, you know, if you had everything in line, maybe even be coming back to us in two weeks for your approvals, as opposed to waiting till later in June to get your approval.
Well, that was very unhelpful.
Yes, so this technically needs, if we're going to go the special permit direction, it needs a public hearing, because it is a special permit. So we'd have to have time, you know, to notify the abutters and things like that.
How much time would that take you?
So, yeah, I was hoping, I'd have to double-check, but I was hoping potentially to have it on the June, our June 13th meeting for a public hearing. It's technically not a public hearing on our calendar, but we can make it one if that's the case. Because obviously, their business is time-sensitive, since it's seasonal.
Yeah, exactly. And if you could check to see whether or not it would be possible-
Yeah.
...to do a public hearing, you know, at the, is it May 23rd?
That, yeah, that's not enough time. It would be the June 13th is the earliest.
But if you could at least sort of have those discussions and maybe come back to us with what you've worked out at the May 23th meeting, so that, you know, we would know that those issues have been resolved, you know, before we, you know, get to a public hearing.
Okay.
So informal, informal leading to formal, that's good.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
And where are your three assistants tonight?
Oh, four of them?
Yeah, four.
They're all a baseball, all four of them.
Counselor?
I just wanted, I had a question about permitting. Uh, Ally, you say it's a special-
Talk into the mic, please.
Right behind you.
There's one right.
Okay.
Just a question about the permitting. I understand there's a special permit, special use permit required, which I think this board has jurisdiction to grant. There's also a site plan special permit, which is triggered by this, this request. We would advocate, this board has the power to waive site plan in particular cases. And we would support such a waiver, in this case, to expedite the resolution of this matter. I think it's 355 section, subsection F, that grants you that power. So I just want you to understand that we would support that.
That's great, yes. In the, so in that code section for the special permit for a restaurant, fast food, takeout, it does state that a site plan is needed. But in the past, so I'm using precedent for the food, this food truck in particular, we've used an existing site plan to cover that. So that's what I'm proposing here as well. The site plan that we're just reviewing to use that in place, so that they don't have to go through the waiver process, because it does require a fee, you know, and review, obviously. So if we just, it would issue the special permit, I think that that would be the best.
And you're okay working directly with them?
Yes, I think we've, we've discussed that before.
Is that sound reasonable, in terms of?
So we just use precedent.
Okay. Any other questions? Richard, I'm sure you can have a meeting with them. You get that on your calendar? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in, I hope we've answered everything.
Great, thank you.
And we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. You gonna serve cheeseburgers?
You want them, you get them.
Ally?
Okay.
Do you need these last?
No, I don't need those, it's just the other ones, thank you.
The, um, the next order is, let's see, what do we got here? PB 2007-36, Chapman, D E F O S, Southwest Gate Road. Review letter from the owners and attorney, counselor. Long time note C. I guess we'll see you a little bit.
Well, in that case, for the record, Andrew Singer, attorney on behalf of the applicant, or in this case, the owner of the lots in question, who is Mark Zippo, who is sitting here with me. I submitted a letter to you, and I'm here requesting two things this evening. One is a clarification from you. This is, we were discussing with Ally, this is a cluster subdivision that was done back in '07. One of you on this board sat on that, Joe, but I won't say who it was. And this was a subdivision that created seven house lots, created the farm, the farm that was there as a separate lot, and two open space lots. Everything was finished back then, recorded, deeded out. The economy intervened and Mr. Zippo had not been able to build the houses until, you know, he'd like to move forward now. In discussing this with Ally, she wanted to, us to come in and just to discuss with you and make sure that you agree that, and I'll tell you why I think so, that the special permits that were granted and all the recorded documents, and I have copies of all of them, and you probably do, were duly exercised. And as you know, and it's, I set forth in my letter, under the court cases that deal with special permits, once you duly exercise a special permit, they don't lapse. And in this case, and so that's the first thing I'm here for. It was just, it's a clarification that house lots 1 through 7, and if you're looking at the plans, if you're coming down Southwest Gate, there's, and I know you have the full-size plans over there, it's the three house lots on the left, 226, 230, 236 on the assessors map. And then if you keep going down, there are four panhandle lots right between the farm and, you guys looked at the land just north of this a few weeks ago, just to help orient you. So these, the panhandle lots are right below it. If you need a bigger plan, I see-
Do you have a bigger plan, because I only have one?
Let me, yes, I do.
Thank you.
I saw her desperately looking.
I know, I did too, I was hoping that you have.
It's not so much the scrunching part, it is, can I make a request that I know that this is the plan that has been submitted with the quest? But can we do something for the board that kind of color codes or-
Sure.
-puts little sparkles on it or something?
I can do that.
So we can tell what lot, because half the time, I can't tell what lot I'm supposed to be looking at.
No problem. So in this case, and just to hit you with these three, one of the, these are the three.
Yep.
And these are the four panhandles right here.
Okay, got it.
Since these ones, and I think you guys have the same thing, those are the four panhandles, and those are the three.
Okay.
Just so you know what's what on the plan. And so this first question, this clarification question is, and you'll see it on the larger plans, there were two open space lots that were created. Ms. Chapman, who was the person who actually created the subdivision, she created the subdivision, recorded all the instruments, the covenants, the decision. There's actually a restriction on the farm for the benefit of these lots. And she deeded the open space lots to the town. If you read the decision, originally, there was going to be a conservation restriction, nobody wanted it. And so there was the planning board, and it's in the decision with an asterisk on the covenant, said, "Okay, look, deed it to the trust." The town said, "We'll take it." No one wanted the conservation restriction, but the town said, "Look, we'll take ownership." So those were deeded out. So what happened in reliance on the permit is that all the lots were sold, and the lots are owned by the town, which were donated. And in my opinion, under the court cases, and this is on the second page of my letter, I believe that more than evidences that the special permits were exercised, such that the normal two-year and eight-year lapse periods wouldn't apply. Because if they did apply, then we have a big problem, because we would have the town owning-
The town having it back to you?
And we'll, and let me also state for the record, I told this to Ally, if the town would like to give the open space back, we're happy to take it, but that would be the problem. You have two problems. One, the open space lots, the title would be thrown into question, and the farm lot, which none of us own. You know, there's a third party that runs the farm. All of that would potentially be in question. So I think all the evidence seems clear to me that this was exercised. And Ally just wanted to get your take on it. I don't think it requires, it's a clarification, it's not a formal, you know, application per se. But if you agree, we agree, she agrees, then on that point, you know, we're all set.
You want to jump into the deep end, Ally?
Sure, yeah. So, Mr. Singer and myself did review this together, and I do agree that it was executed because the open space lots were given to the town. And there's really no way to go back from that. Granted, there's no building permits that were pulled, there is no-
One second here.
Useless open space.
Okay, one at a time here, go ahead, Ally, you want to start again?
Yes, okay. So I agree after our meeting that even though there was no building permits pulled and the covenant is still in place, the open space from the cluster was given to the town. So there's, from my view, I agree that it was acted upon because the open space was given to the town. There's no way to go back from that. So in my opinion, I agree that the subdivision was acted upon, although no building permits were, have been pulled to date, or the covenant has not been released.
Okay. There's guaranteed to be a question.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm a little bit confused between as to what the history of this was. Wasn't this a subdivision approval?
Yes, so-
And in a subdivision approval, if it's not built or substantially built, which usually means at least having the roadway stone or something of that nature, within eight years and it expires. So I don't understand how we get around that.
So, so, yeah, so I understand what you're saying, and I am not a lawyer, unfortunately, I wish I was.
But I think we need a legal opinion on this, and we need a legal opinion from an attorney for the town on this. Because in my opinion, and again, I'm not an expert in this area of law, it's by, just taking a look at it, you know, my understanding is that the subdivision has expired. If they want to do this type of development, they're perfectly happy to come in with another subdivision, you know, application and request. You know, and we can review it as a, as a new matter.
How do you deal with the open space, though, that's already been given to the town?
Well, it's conveyed and it's been recorded.
So it would come-
So the town owns that and it's recorded in the registry.
So it would come in exactly as it is now?
As it extends today.
It would just be potentially reapproved by the planning board?
Well, the planning board may not reapprove it, because we have a completely different planning board. Yeah? But, I mean, I think after, you know, after 10 years and changes on the planning board of all but one individual, you know, I really feel uncomfortable, you know, saying that we can just continue this without having, you know, a legal opinion from town council.
Linda?
Is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
So the question is whether or not the eight years have expired?
Yeah, because this was a 2007 approval, which was 10 years ago.
Oh. Go ahead, Linda, thank you.
The special permit, refresh my memory. The requirements of a special permit, you have to do what in order to keep the special permit alive? I understand the substantial completion here or substantial use. But a special permit ordinarily, you have to do what? Pull a building permit within X amount of time?
So there's two things here. So there's the special permit for the open space, which under our code, it's considered a special permit. And then there's the second layer of it that is mass general law, that says that if a subdivision isn't acted upon within eight years, then it's technically null and void. So the special permit, basically, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm not, but I could find that out for you. But you're talking about the special permit, correct, for the open space?
As well as the, the housing lots?
Mm-hmm.
So these housing lots are, all seven of them are owned by different people?
No, no, they're all owned by Mr. Zippo.
Okay.
And if I might, and none have been built?
None have been built on at this point. However, under, under the state law, which I have in my letter, what you look at for the, for the two-year rule is, is if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. So, one, you always have the authority under good cause to say that. But in this case, the substantial uses, this was a unique subdivision, and we weren't involved with the original creation of it, but there's no new road. Southwest Gate Road exists. And that's why those four panhandle lots are panhandle lots, they're not, they're not lots on a new road. There were covenant conditions to improve the road a little bit, you know, put in some hydrants and make sure the fire truck could get down a 14-foot access. But the road itself has always been there. I mean, you know, it used to go all the way through, it's now blocked by the, so, so there was no new, this is, there was a covenant that was proposed because of the open space and because of, just to make sure the town didn't have to snowplow, and if you read the other conditions. But Ms. Chapman, you know, she exercised it, to get to Mr. Atkinson's point, is, she exercised it, in this case, houses hadn't been built, but all of the land was in reliance on those permits. And that's what the courts look at, is reliance on, use of, substantial use, reliance on. And that's where I was coming from in looking at the court cases with, with that.
Okay. Any other question?
If it may be a general question, apart from the process and the procedure, you know, of going through it again just to, because of the fact that after eight years it expired, are there any issues we see with?
Well, there's, there's an issue I see just looking at it with regard to the panhandle lots. Because if you remember, we had approved a panhandle lot ordinance. I forget whether it was one year ago or two years ago. This clearly is not the intent, and you end up with, this to me looks like an avoidance of the requirement on frontage on a roadway. And that it ends up with four driveways in relatively close proximity to one another, which depending on the location and the traffic and all, could potentially be, you know, a traffic hazard.
Mr. Atkinson, just so you know, there's only going to be one driveway. If you flip to the later plans in the full set-
Oh, okay.
-what was proposed was a shared driveway among the four lots. So they are four individual panhandles, but there's only going to be one driveway that comes off the road.
So then, Mr. Singer, could that driveway then be considered sort of like a private roadway? To the lots?
If you look on the plans, it's listed as an easement, I believe.
Well, I mean, with all owners-
It wouldn't have a layout. It will act for all intents and purposes like a private way-
Okay, yeah.
-but it won't be legally, because it's an easement.
I don't understand the distinction, but that's all right.
Oh, there it is, that's utility easement.
That's the utility.
Yeah. See, this is a proposed, it's a foot. There's a utility easement, and it's also access. So there's, if you look at the later plan, there is some, but there is a actual dotted lines that show how the shared driveways work.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah.
Do I understand, how do you get around the seven years? You're saying, what, that the conveyance out to the Conservation Commission was?
The conveyance out of, not only to the, to the, to the Conservation Commission, but also the farm lot, you know, the Lot 8, which was the original lot that was there. Those conveyances of, in effect, developed land, meaning the farm lot's developed, it's used. The open space is developed in the sense that it's protected. That's, it's being used for the purpose for which it was created, which is open space. The seven lots that remain, they're the size that they are, and they're not 40,000 square feet each. That's going to be the sec, we're going to get to the second, ultimately, maybe the, hopefully, the second thing I wanted to ask for your interpretation on. But so- But so, and Ally and I discussed this, I'm not sure if we were coming back formally to get to your, what we'd even be asking, in the sense that it's not, with the open space and the farm lot gone, we're left with what we're left, and we can't go back in time because we don't control the other land.
Yeah, so you may not be coming back with the cluster subdivision, but you may just be coming back with the regular subdivision.
Well, in that case, you would be going from seven lots down to three, maybe?
Because of, these are all 20,000 square foot lots.
If you look at the size, so then, the, the benefit of why the open space was conveyed in the first place would be voided at that point. You know, in my opinion, because, because if you had never, if this had, if this had never been a cluster, if they'd just done what you just suggested for the 4,000, you could have had the same number of lots with protected open space. I can't tell you why it was done as a cluster originally, I'm not sure, but, but as you know, the bylaw requires that you have to have enough full land to do the reduced cluster, and so that's what was done here.
No, exactly, but again, you know, it's my interpretation that, you know, and unless I hear differently from town council, that, you know, if this is not substantially, you know, improved within eight years, then the approval expires.
And I, and I understand the problems it creates for you, but...
Yeah, no, I do too.
You do this at your peril, you know? I mean, statute's there.
Right. And that's because, you know, they don't want to tie up land that is going to not be used and tie up land that has been approved, you know, because things change over a period of eight to 10 years in a town. And the, the sort of, you know, the, sort of, the philosophy with regard to development can potentially change over that period of time. So I think the, you know, unless you act on the approval that you got, then you're subject to those changes.
And it's our opinion that Ms. Chapman did act on the approval that she received, and that's what set forth my letter. And I have no problem if you want to ask town council to, to review that, but it's our opinion that she did act on it.
In what way?
The ways we've said, I've said.
Conveyed out...
Oh, the conveyance, the creation of the, the creation of the covenants, the creation of private restrictions that are also recorded, the granting of the farm lot to a third party, which might have been conveyed a couple times since then, and the conveyance of the open space. All of that was acting on the approval. It was acting in reliance on the approval. No one would have granted it for open space if they weren't going to go ahead, you know, at some point. And then shortly thereafter, I'd have to check, the dates are in my letter, she conveyed out the open space, this was all, let's see, the open space was conveyed out in '07, right after your approvals. The farm lot was deeded out for the third party in 2008. I'm trying to remember when you bought the land.
2008.
2008, so it was all within about a year.
But he buys the remainder charged with the knowledge.
Well, he bought seven house lots.
I bought a portion, I bought a portion, a portion of the complete subdivision. Just a portion. We're, we're talking about one portion of a subdivision.
No, you're not. That's for somebody else to decide.
Yeah, that's why I think...
Do you, would you like to weigh in? We've got another lawyer here.
Yeah, go ahead, Derek.
I'm, I'm concurring with my brothers. I'm not so sure that, I mean, if one or two or some of the house lots had been built, I might, I might see your argument more, but I, I would say we need an opinion of town council to give us, to give us a yes or a no. I don't, I don't know that, I understand your argument, you know, I understand that, that open space may, may have been deeded in reliance on what was done, but, but you're talking substantial development under, under the cluster development, and to me, that's not substantial, it's not substantial to leave seven lots that aren't, none of which are built, so I, I, without a formal opinion of council that's going through your, you know, the, the case lot is, to see for similarities, I just, I would be uncomfortable tonight saying that, that it's substantial.
And we've had any number of cases where there's been similar, and maybe there's seven lots and two have been built on.
Right.
And they come into us and say, you know, we just couldn't keep going because of the economy or whatever. That isn't the case here. You didn't touch any of them. Good job decision, but I think as...
Well, the economy played a huge role in that.
I understand.
Seen through many applications where we...
But he's charged with knowledge of the statute.
Yeah. And remember, though, as you're asking, a couple things with town council. One, Lot 8 is developed. The farm lot, which had been bigger, was reduced in size to be Lot 8. And that actually is developed and it's in use as a farm, as it always has been. If you're going to request, you know, town council to look at it, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that was developed prior to the...
Yes, I'm not sure if the changes have been made, but yes, it was developed before then.
But to me, that, that, I wouldn't think that that helped your argument, I would think that hurt your argument, because that wasn't something that was done as a part of the, of the subdivision and the special permit approvals. It was done prior to, so it wasn't anything that was done after a planning board gave you, gave the approval in, in '07.
Well, it was created as a lot, which before was a much larger lot.
It was created as a lot, but it was not developed after your, after, after the approval.
No, but it is developed.
No, but...
Understood, but I'm saying, as far as substantial work having been done under it, you know, I, I think it's a, I would have to agree with, with my counterparts that, you know, the opinion of town council has to...
No, that's fine. I would just ask that you give a copy of my letter to town council, because I'm sure you would anyway, to, to do that. And I guess if you're going to be asking town council that question, let me jump to the second thing, because I have a feeling you're going to tie it into the same request. I mean, I know where this is going.
You've been in front of us before.
Oh, just a few times. The, the second request was an interpretation of 251, of, sorry, 325-51-N as it relates to 51-G. And that is the provision, and again, you're very familiar with this because you looked at it for the adjacent land only in the last month or so, two houses on one lot by special permit. And again, I discussed this with Ally, and as you can see, the argument that I had there, when you look at, and, and talks about 40,000 square feet per lot, when you look at the intent of G, which talks about having 40,000 square feet per lot and then creating the cluster which breaks off open space, it's my opinion that you could, by special permit, be allowed to seek permission for two houses on a cluster lot, as you could have as if it had been a grid lot instead of a cluster. That's again, a question of interpretation. It's the interplay between two sections of the bylaw when you have something here. And I'm welcome your thoughts tonight, your interpretation, or if it's going to go to town council as well, that's fine as well.
We will start out with Joe. Do you have a question on that?
No, as far as I'm concerned, we sent it to town council.
Yeah.
And I, with all due respect...
I thought it was going there.
From my experience in the business, you were charged with the knowledge of the statute, okay? We didn't have any obligation, in other words, to send you a letter and say, look out, you know, the statute's going to expire. You're charged with that knowledge as, as a...
We're talking about the second issue, though, Joe. Now, not, not, I hear, I hear you on that. This is a question, if you have, you can almost look at the second question irregardless of the, of the first question, which is, when you have cluster lots, if the cluster lots and the open space there around equaled 40,000, at least 40,000 square feet per lot before it was clustered, once it has been clustered, can those lots still seek a special permit under 51-N to maintain two single-family dwellings on each of those clustered lots? That's a question that doesn't have to be tied to this plan per se, it's a general interpretation question of the zoning bylaw.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question? So on each of the lots that are in round number 20,000 square feet, you would now have two homes connected?
Correct. That's, that's, that is the question. That is the essence of the question, right. And I had the numbers in my letter. If you do it, if you averaged it all out, there was 52,278 square feet times seven. Yeah, but no, you're right, that's...
Really squeezing, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's questions. We're here asking you, you know, for your interpretations regarding that.
The challenge, the challenge from the development standpoint is that the event that took place two months ago has dramatically affected in many ways the value of those lots and, and the circumstances of the situation.
What event was that?
The abut, the abut was granted...
You granted approval to the abut to the north to have three, two family houses on three lots, each lot which was more than 40,000 square feet.
Well, then you're right.
But that, yeah, no, perfectly fine. It's just that, that abuts this land, I mean, that's the immediate abut. So Mr. Zippo has been looking at, and he's been struggling with this for a number of years, you know, the economics of, of, both the economy in general and development.
Not, not to offend the bylaws or anybody in this room or anything, you know, it's just a person who owns land trying to make use of the land that he...
I assume best.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, one more question? So from a bird's eye view, can you, do you have a picture of it?
Yes, I would, but my...
What does this look like? Is this wooded? Is it, I presume that this is the easement for the power utility?
Yeah.
It's predominantly cleared.
So that's pretty, pretty cleared.
It's pretty clear.
And the rest, the rest around is...
Well, on the, on the three lots, it's pretty wooded, right?
No, it's cleared.
Oh, that's clear, because that was where the farm was.
It's all, it's all cleared with minor exception.
Those are cleared.
No, he's saying most of those are as well.
These, the four.
No, all seven.
Of the, of the seven lots, I would say less than 20% is uncleared. They were actually riding rings for the farm, which were parceled by Carla Chapman.
And I presume that by the time they are developed, it's, it's pretty open, right? Must be.
Well, they're pretty open now.
They're open, yeah, they're open now.
In fact, development would probably lead to more vegetation than you have today because, you know, people with a house will plant trees or bushes or other plantings that you don't have now.
And then if, since, since we're going into, we're digging a bit deeper here, in anticipation of what, what may happen in the future.
You're in the deep end now.
I'm in the deep end right now, anyway.
I'm in the deep end.
So to get a, try to visualize this, so we have seven lots or so with each of them two homes on it, I'm giving, using the word home. So there's 14 residences with X number of people, and their only access is, I presume, if I read this right, is this 20-foot wide proposed access easement all the way out here, right?
Yeah, Southwest Gate Road out to Boglins.
That's what I'm looking at.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, the road stops, as you can see on the side of it, doesn't, they don't connect anymore, it's a dead end.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, so how would a fire, this is a, well, I guess the fire chief would probably have input as well. That's a long haul for him.
Well, that was reviewed by the fire department during the first, you know, go-around, and that's why you'll see in the covenants or in the conditions, they wanted to make sure there was 14-foot, you know, clearance for the trucks, but, and that's why fire hydrants, I think, were required down the road. So, no, that was reviewed, and it was appro, it was accepted at that point.
I hear you, I'll speak into it, I'm sorry. I'm trying to visualize it. That's a long haul for a long truck.
Okay, before we visualize that, why don't we just say that it seems to be the general feeling that we refer this to town council?
Both matters, or both questions, yeah.
Yes, and we'd all feel better about that. Do you have, is that okay with you, Ally?
Yep, that's completely, I think that's the wise choice. I just wanted to point out, though, it does say for the two-family dwelling, the last one that we're talk, the last issue that we're talking about, the code does say a minimum of 40,000 square feet of land. And I know, I understand the concept that you have open space, you're doing a good thing by preserving this land, and some of the clustered lots, which are smaller than the required zoning district, some of that area is in the open space, but the bylaw specifically states that the lot has to have 40,000 square feet. So in my opinion, which again, I'm not an attorney, that it would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for variance because it specifically says 40,000 square feet. But I'm happy to bring this to town council as well to review.
I think we'd all feel better for what the town...
I was looking at the intent of the bylaw, as I said, so, yeah, I would appreciate having some way in on both.
Mr. Chairman, in my memory any good, didn't Mr. Spitz, didn't he have a different lawyer than the town council? He wasn't happy with the town council, because I don't mean to put that on him because I'm not sure what it was, but he...
I don't know, we, we do have a town council now, don't we?
We do, but it's, it is different from what the rest of the town uses. It is a different, that we use, that's correct, yes. You're going to put me on the spot, I can't remember. Do you remember?
Anyway, I, I know we don't use the town council.
No, it was the council that worked with us on the Cumberland Farms issue, which was different from...
Jamie, do you remember his name? I hate to put you on the spot. We might as well get something from every lawyer in the room.
His first name was Adam. I don't remember his last name, and he was with the firm...
Mead Bobrowski's firm.
Yeah, DeBroski's firm, yeah.
Mark Bobrowski's first name.
Yeah, and that's in Concord, but I think he worked out of the office in Milford or something.
Mark was a law professor in a...
At New England.
Yep.
He's one of the zoning...
And he, he wrote the definitive book on planning Massachusetts, yes.
Oh, so his firm is...
It's his firm that, that we used.
So in any event, that's who we're going to use.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Good. So we'll do that, and if you could, you know, tell him to put it on his calendar.
I will.
Okay?
Tell him to speed, hurry it up.
Oh, please.
Yeah.
If there are any questions, let me know, and I know you'll tell me when...
Yeah, I definitely will.
And we'll come, we'll see what he says.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but not least...
I hate to wake you up back that way, we're having such a good time, but...
That's fine. It was interesting to listen to.
So this is, Ally, this is performance duty release for Cumberland Farms.
That's correct. So I think it was maybe a few meetings ago, maybe it was one meeting ago, we, the planning board agreed to a cash bond of $56,250 for the landscaping that was required, and also for the shutters that were on the building itself. We gave them until May 1st to complete this, which was at the, in accordance with the temporary CO as well. I did go out to the site on the 29th of April, and I reviewed what they had planted and then installed, and it was to the approved plan, both the shutters, which were the same color as Chatham, which was required, and also the landscaping that was approved by the planning board. So it's my recommendation that the board release the cash bond in the amount of $56,250 because all requirements have been met.
Mr. Chairman? Any question? Go ahead.
Just one brief question, and maybe you change it along the way, and I didn't, I missed it. Why am I thinking that your little sitting, outside sitting area there with the little umbrellas and stuff, why am I thinking that was originally on the left side of the building? Doesn't make that much difference to me, I just wondered.
If you remember, we went through a couple of original iterations, and then there was a multitude of different drawings with different designs, building closer to the road, et cetera. I think at one point, we switched the sides so we could create a sidewalk up what would be the side adjacent to, not the former package store side, but where the residential buildings are on that side. And I, now, if you look at the site directly, and I don't have my bearings straight, on the right side, there's a sidewalk running up the side that way that leads you to it, and I think we brought the tables to the other side of the building so we could have that sidewalk there.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my recollection also, Jamie.
The approved plans do show that area in the same location on the right.
And nobody said any yet because of the weather. Any other questions?
Just a comment, I think it looks very nice.
I do as well.
I didn't build it, but I'll take credit. Sure, I'll take.
Take full credit.
Sure, why not?
Okay, motion?
I move that with respect to PB 2016 dash four, dash of four Cumberland Farms, that the planning board released the cash bond in the amount of $56,250.
Second.
And moved in second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Any other questions while you're here?
Just practical question, when that check's cut, will someone let me know, and I can[1764.87] have someone come pick it up?
Yeah, we will definitely let you know, we just have to get it from the finance.
No, I understand. All right, let's see if you get it back as fast as we got it to you.
We'll try, I know.
She'll deliver it to the secret when you can meet her there for lunch.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Might need it to pay the bill.
Thank you. Okay, all business. PB 2015 dash 12, Chase, request to sign ten pages of Mylar, who is?
Yes, so that came back from last meeting, and I wasn't sure who had originally signed the map, so I did get that information. So it was Joe, Peter, Jim, and Alan, but Alan isn't here, but I will track him down. But if the board, you know, those members could sign it, it was already approved plan, the board just signed the first page, but the applicant is requesting that the board sign all of the pages, which is not normally in our practice, but.
Ally, and we may have discussed this the last time, but if we did, I just forgot, why is the applicant requesting we sign all ten pages instead of just the, the page that we usually sign?
Right, he wants to file them, and he, he wants the information, I guess, for, from my recollection of it, for, for building permits, just to make sure that they're filed. I don't know if it's a great.
When you say file, you mean record.
With recorded, I'm sorry, I use my old term, yes, recorded, you're correct, with the registry of deeds, so. It's, it's just more of an administrative thing, really.
Probably doubled our salaries by doing that.
Get your rubber, yeah, get your rubber stamp out and get to work.
All right. And let's see, briefings and reports, anything else? Oh, we opened and, did we, yeah, we officially closed the meeting at, at half the town meeting, didn't we, on the way out the door?
Yes, yes, we did.
Yes.
I was with you.
Mr. Chairman, just a matter of interest to you, on June 7th, the Capitol Outlay Committee is doing a bus trip that we, we do every year, sometimes twice a year, and members of the planning board are invited if they want to come. We meet at nine o'clock at the community center, and.
June 7th?
Yes, and.
That's AM, I take it.
Yes, and, and we just go around and look at, like we looked at 124, we went down and looked at the parking lot at the beaches, we looked, we'll probably go down and look at the area around the harbor because of all the changes that are proposed there.
Probably Sacre Tucket Harbor, too, I had a minute.
That's what I meant, Sacre Tucket, yeah. Uh, we go wherever Rich Larry tells us to go, but generally, whatever current matters, for example, we'll probably go look at the, the water, the new water tank that they put in.
Lothr Street?
Lothr Street, yeah.
It's lovely.
Oh, it is, it's nice.
Yes, it's very nice.
I was intrigued, we, we went to the, the most recent one before that, and I was intrigued that, that they didn't have, I thought, I expected more pipes and pumps and things, it's not that much, really.
I wouldn't want to live beside one of them.
A big one or a little one?
Any one. It seems like there's a lot of water in them.
They're pretty benign.
It is a big town.
I need to sign all of them.
It's pretty benign.
Okay, okay, so, um, any other, and, you know, we're, enough of us were at the town meeting, we'd have to report on that? Peter, everything went through?
I, let's say, I unfortunately wasn't there because, you know, I recognize.
Don't worry, Jim and I went to the.
No, but I, I want to express my appreciation to everybody who, who participated in the formulation of the, of the program that went to town meeting, so, that's all I can say at this point, so hold on.
Until 10:45.
No other, no other items before the board?
I just want to make one comment to the board, as of next meeting, so, May 23rd, we will have someone here to take minutes for us, so it's very exciting for me, and I can't wait to have her, so.
We have, we have money in the budget. How much fun to do that?
It's in the community development budget, so yes, we do. We're, we're, Conservation Commission got a clerk who's going to be taking minutes for their commission, and we're getting the clerk that was taking minutes for conservation, so, kind of just a shifting of things, but.
And she will also be, be doing.
Historic.
Transcribing the historic minutes.
Which is also very exciting.
I don't believe she'll be at our meetings, but she'll be transcribing our minutes, so it's very exciting, on both ends of this table.
On both ends, yes, that's true.
Oh, good. Since we're talking and waiting for this, who are our liaison with, with which committees at this point?
Jim is on. Among community preservation.
Okay. Are you, just, I forgot.
I'm the chairperson of the historic commission, I am not, I have not been designated any such liaison, but I am chairperson of the historic commission, so I'm happy to report on those one.
And Linda, you're not officially on the housing committee, but you're on it, I mean, you go to it, don't you?
Yes, I do go to some of them.
And Joe, you're on Capitol Outlay?
Yes.
And Sacre Tucket Harbor is on.
Actually, I don't know whether we're entitled from this board to another person on Capitol Outlay, because I'm now on Capitol Outlay, appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Originally, I was like, Jim, that, that I was, I was the planning board's representative on Capitol Outlay, but eventually, I don't know whether it was a graduation or not, but I became appointed by, by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, you get appointed by the Board of Selectmen anyways, the, I mean, I think the way it works is that this committee says the planning board has a person, we recommend a person, and they still do the appointing.[1688.73]